I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest School District Number 67 Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, January 22, 2013. Prior to the meeting, we had an executive session at 5:30 PM in which the discussion of matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body occurred. In addition, we discussed litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent. We are now returning to open session. May I have a roll call? Please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Mr. Penderzky.
Here.
Mrs. Rose. Mr. Schuler.
Here.
Mrs. Wald.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This brings us to the President's Report. I just really want to welcome everyone who is in our audience today and say Happy New Year. It's been awhile since we've been, it feels like since December when we had our board meetings, so I hope everyone is eager to begin 2013. This brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. I have three items that I'd like to report on tonight. First being an update on school safety procedures. A letter was sent on January 17 to Lake Forest parents and guardians, and in that letter, it's written by me and addressed to all of our parents and guardians, giving credit to Dr. Weimer, Wymer, Wymer. It's the German teacher coming out, me again. Dr. Wymer for her leadership in spearheading district efforts to meet a balance, and it really is a balance between the extremes of complete and total openness and the other extreme of really an uninviting atmosphere with metal detectors and so on and so on. And each community must strike that balance. So what the letter detailed were three different things. One, what we've been doing in recent years. And again, Dr. Wymer did the work of selecting an outside safety consultant, creating crisis plans for each building, and conducting full-day training with the security consultant, and then conducting whole-staff training for everyone in the district. The next thing it talked about was that the efforts that we're doing this year to address safety concerns or safety improvements, and that is the creation of additional sections of those crisis plans, and then also, very importantly, finalizing agreements on alternative dismissal sites. In the coming months, we're going to be doing the following. You're going to have another outside safety expert come in to review our plans and assess our buildings. We've also been conducting lockdown drills on a regular basis in all of our buildings, and those are very important, making incremental improvements there, and working with our Lake Forest Police Department. For the first time, our police department is going to have access to all of our security cameras district-wide. A little more upbeat information I wanted to share is ongoing principal search. We netted north of 70 applicants for that principal search of what I believe is a very, very strong candidate pool, and the interviews will begin in the very near future, this coming week, in fact. And then also, related to things going on in the district that are very important, on Friday this past week, we had district-wide professional development, and this was all day, and one of the things that I repeat over and over again is the more that we allow our staff time, our teachers to have time, and everyone that works in our district to work with each other, to plan and collaborate, the better our students will be served. And so sessions ranged from a gentleman named Jim Kling, who met with our entire special ed staff to look at behavior intervention strategies, also did a lot of work with our general ed staff. Another topic that was appealing to some called speed geeking, which was quick peeks at a bunch of tools and sites. Another one is using district-wide now is training on Google apps. That's a pretty amazing thing if you haven't seen it yet. It's two people can open documents and then simultaneously edit that, seeing each other's edits at the same time. Incredible collaboration tool for us. Judy Epke, our district technology consultant, did a flipped classroom discussion. And a flipped classroom is, for those of us who went to school back when we went to school and we got a lecture and then went home and did homework, a flipped classroom is turning that around and having kids do the homework. They do the lecture at home and come in to work with the teacher on processing collectively what the homework would be. We also had Dr. Hendrickson, and Dr. Hendrickson, by the way, was the spearhead of this entire day, and one of the teachers said that in all of her years in the district, this was what she believed was the finest professional development experience that she'd ever had. And this is a teacher that will be retiring this year as well. And he conducted a discussion on student achievement and how it relates to our new student-teacher evaluation. And Dr. Shin conducted another one on using assessment and instruction with our students and staff. So it was a very interesting and engaging day. It's very nice to see some of our teachers in the audience today, nodding as well and saying, yep, they used their time well and did interesting things. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. This brings us to public participation. Is there a member of the audience that would like to address the board?
Seeing none, we will move on to our reports and discussion, the World Language 2012-13 report. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mrs. Wald, and Mr. Moline, and two of our world language teachers are going to be addressing some of the things that are ongoing in the district, and I'm also very pleased to see that we have a student that is going to be joining us for this presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the world language program today, and I too am very pleased to have Jane Swisher with me, and Gloria Melzuski as well, and then a student perspective as well from Stephanie. Thank you so much. So I will present a bit of data and then sort of clear the way for those voices. So one piece of data that we do like to look at, just in terms of big picture, is how are our students doing after they graduate eighth grade and head over to the high school in terms of their placement into the world, into high school world language? And we take it as a very good sign that the vast majority of our students are placing into sophomore-level courses, or even in a couple of cases, junior-level coursework. So nearly 85% of DPM graduates placed into at least that sophomore-level world language course. This is very encouraging and very good data to see, and it's a continuation of what we've seen the last few years as well, so we're feeling really good about that. Additionally, approximately 90% of students actually continued in the same language that they chose several years prior, so it's showing that the students are feeling good about the choice that they made, and they're wanting to persist and continue through. So ultimately, I think they're going to graduate with excellent language skills and also a good repertoire in terms of the cultures that they're being, that they're learning about as well. Another piece of data that we like to look at is in terms of fourth-grade world language placements. At this point in time, we have a third-grade exploratory program where students are exposed to four languages, and then toward the end of third grade, they're asked in consultation with their parents, of course, to make a choice as far as what language they would like to study from fourth grade onward, and we ask them to make a commitment from fourth grade through eighth grade. And in the current school year, so students who are now in fourth grade, this is the way that students ended up choosing. So 15% chose French, and you can kind of see Latin. Actually, in the next graph, I'll show you kind of a chart of the last five years, so you'll be able to see trends a little bit better, but this is just a look at what languages were selected for our current fourth-grade students. Now, this graph will show you what we've seen in the last five years, and a couple things stand out to me. So Spanish has been, you know, our most popular language in terms of selection over the last five years. However, in 2012-13, it did see a little bit of a decline, down to 37%. And by contrast, Latin actually jumped significantly from 13% to 32%. And Mandarin has been sort of rising steadily, slowly but steadily, since 2008-09, and French has kind of stayed more flat-lined, I guess you would say. But, you know, I can't tell you for sure if this is a, you know, a one-year thing or, you know, an anomaly versus a possibly a longer-term trend, but something that we noticed this year is that Latin kind of made a bit of a comeback, I guess you would say. Next, I will turn it over to Jane to be able to talk a little bit more, to give you a glimpse into some of the things that are happening in the classroom in terms of our professional development.
Good evening. How many times have you heard an adult, I've heard adults say, my goodness, I studied language for four years in high school and four years in college, and then I went into a restaurant in Mexico and I couldn't understand a thing what they were saying? Well, I think the whole, the explanation for this is that back in the day when I studied, everything was grammar-focused. Now, everything is communication-focused. The premier language organization in the States, it's called ACTFOL, the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Language, have developed this picture to describe various levels of communicative ability. If you notice, they start, there are four levels, novice, intermediate, advanced, and superior. And notice that it is in a reverse pyramid, because in the novice level, it is quite easy to advance quickly. However, you notice as it advances up to the top of the pyramid, it becomes wider because the challenges become that greater to become a speaker from intermediate to advanced to superior. And what does that mean? They measure, the ACTFOL people measure communicative ability by, in a variety of ways. They look at what's called text, and in a novice level, you'll have someone speaking maybe one-word, one-word answers. They move to intermediate, where it becomes able to respond with a sentence. Moving up to advanced, a developed paragraph, and moving up to superior would be multiple paragraphs. Again, they emphasize that if you, in the normal, traditional learning way, if you have someone who studies language for four years in high school, four years in college, and spends a semester abroad in a Hispanic country, for example, most of them, if they're lucky, will meet advanced low. You have low, mid, and high. They will reach advanced low. That's a lot of work and a lot of hours to get to advanced low. And again, that is just speaking in, that's able to write and speak in paragraphs. Other ways that they evaluate someone is, in the novice level, usually people can respond about personal questions. When you move into the intermediate level, you can talk more about your family. When you move to the advanced, you talk about your community. And when you finally reach the superior level, you're able to talk and expound on world issues. And then finally, the last way of evaluating is, in the novice level, they're not creating, they're just responding. In the intermediate level, they start to create. If they ask you a question, they can answer it, and it is not something that is planned, that they can say, you know, I have five people in my family, and these are their names. When you move up to the advanced level, not only are they creating, they can compare contrasts, they can tell about an event that happened in the past or one that will happen in the future, so they establish tenses. And then when you get to superior level, it is someone who can expound on all sorts of issues and all sorts of tenses with relative accuracy. So you can see that it's not easy to move up that pyramid. What I like to say is that by the time children arrive in the beginning of seventh grade, they are, most of them, at the novice-high level. By the time they leave, they're usually at minimally intermediate-mid. I have also had many, many students who have hit intermediate-high. This is a tremendous accomplishment, because these children haven't even gone to high school yet, and they have four years of high school and they can go to college. So the fact that they're at intermediate-mid and high, when, when you think about it, most people who have four years of high school, four years of college, and an experience abroad reach advanced-low, our students are awesome, and they have made so much progress. And I think it's credit to the program that has started very young, and there are so many hours that the children are exposed to this language. Now, in order to speak a little bit more, in more depth about the whole process of communication and what that entails, is my colleague Gloria.
Bonsoir, mesdames et messieurs, membres du conseil. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. I'm talking about integrated performance assessments, called IPA in the teacher lingo. These are standards-based assessments, which are promoted by the American Council of Teaching a Foreign Language, ACTFOL organization. It's in their Standards for Foreign Language Learning in the 21st Century. These assessment performances are rated in three modes of communication for the student: interpersonal, interpretive, and presentational. So interpersonal is unrehearsed dialogue between two learners. They have to give and take the information, perhaps they're developing a story, perhaps they're interviewing each other, but based on what they're learning in their unit, they would have an unrehearsed dialogue, interpersonal. Interpretive may be what we remember in our foreign language education as reading and listening. The language is coming to them, they're interpreting, they're analyzing it, creating a response or using their notes to do whatever their unit of instruction is. Presentational is what we would old-fashionedly refer to as speaking and writing, okay? They're presenting. This is a planned presentation. Again, the spontaneous one is interpersonal. The planned is presentational. They would be working towards a certain end product on a thematic unit, either in a written format or a spoken format, or both. This is done with a backwards design by the teacher. It can be done at any level, these three types of assessments: interpersonal, interpretive, and presentational. So a novice learner can do this, but like Jane said, at a very minimal level, a few words at a time. By the time they're up in seventh and eighth grade, it's the intermediate level, they can do it at more lengthy sentences, communications. The teacher uses the results of these IPA, Integrated Performance Assessments, to improve the program of instruction at the end of the unit, to reflect on it, and to evaluate their oral proficiency levels. It gives us a lot of details. So what's different between how you and I learned languages and how it's currently being promoted with these integrated performance assessments? Last summer, we were very pleased to have Helena Curtin come and work with our district. She's one of the very top teacher trainers in all of the United States. She wrote a wonderful book, which is used in many universities, called Languages and Children: Making the Match. It teaches about how to teach children in a foreign language education system rather than starting in high school. Okay? She taught us this little physical activity. You're welcome to join me if you'd like, with your hands out. The right hand was grammar, okay? In our days, we learned lists of nouns, lists of how do you make the adjective agree with the noun. The left hand is the performance, okay? In my high school days, all my tests were grammar-based, fill-in-the-blank, conjugate-a-verb. But like I tell my students, nobody's ever going to walk to you on the street of Paris and say, conjugate the verb être for me. Okay? You have to be able to use it. So the performance is here, okay? In those days, the teacher would give you the list of nouns and then think about, what am I going to do with these? How do I get my students to actually do something? Today, it's the reverse. So the left hand is your performance, your proficiency scale, and the teacher creates the thematic unit first, and then discovers what pieces of grammar do my students need to know to support their proficiency, to push the proficiency forward. So the grammar's still there, we still learn list of nouns, but it's not the end-all-be-all. Okay? Jane is going to introduce our following person.
First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Ralp for running your daughter around. Stephanie Ralp is an eighth-grade student, and she's so kind to come because she came from ballet, which she left at seven, and she has to be back there by eight. So, and thank you, Mrs. Ralp, for transporting her. Anyhow, we're very, I'm very pleased I asked Stephanie if she would come and just chat briefly about her world language experience. She's gone through the entire experience. She's been here and gone through from fourth grade, and now she's in eighth grade. So Stephanie, thank you very much, honey.
Me llamo Stephanie Ralp. Estoy en el octavennial y estoy en la clase de la clase de señora Swisher. Good afternoon, good evening. I am Stephanie Ralp. I am an eighth grader at DPM and in señora Swisher's honors class. I would like to share with all of you this evening the experience with the Spanish program that I have been a part of since fourth grade at Cherokee. In fourth grade, I would have Spanish class two to three times a week and learn the basic elements of the language, which consisted of mainly useful words and some phrases. Upon entering fifth grade, we then had Spanish every day and learned more functional phrases that created the basic building block of the language. As I continued into sixth grade, we learned many more terms and received a solid introduction to regular verbs. Before I get into my seventh-grade experience, I need to share a little story of my first impressions of Spanish on the west side. When I was upstairs for health class one day, when I was in sixth grade, I happened to pass señora Swisher's classroom. Above her door, there was, and still is, a sign that reads "La clase de señora Swisher: No hablas en inglés." At this time, having a basic Spanish vocabulary, I could decipher that it read "The class of Mrs. Swisher: Do not talk in English." My very first reaction was, I hope I never end up in this class for Spanish. The following year, as fate would have it, I received my seventh-grade schedule, and it showed that I had señora Swisher for Spanish. It wasn't until walkthrough that I saw the sign again, and I remembered my initial thought. My very first reaction was, this is going to be an interesting year if the expectations in this class are what is written on the sign. Let me now share with you a typical day. Every day, at the beginning of class, we write down our class's agenda for the day. I have found this expanded my vocabulary greatly, more than any textbook could have, because what we are writing is always in context to what we are doing in class. Many class activities include señora reading us Spanish legends, presenting projects and dialogues, and having class discussions. All of these contribute to the factor of continually speaking in Spanish. I do admit, it was terrifying at first to be spoken to and not fully know what was being said or how to respond. However, by being fully immersed into the Spanish language, I was not only training my ear to hear Spanish, but also eventually become comfortable with it. Despite my first impression of how difficult this could be, the past two years have been the best Spanish experience any middle-school student could have asked for. Being fully immersed, speaking Spanish daily, has taught me how to speak a foreign language and speak it well. I have found this teaching method has increased the learning focus of my class, which has resulted in student dialogue and participation during the class. In addition, the writing aspect, combined with verbal speaking, provides the perfect complement to effectively learn the language. The repetition of continually speaking in Spanish with absolutely no English has built a rock-solid foundation to give me the confidence to fluently communicate in Spanish. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my experience with you this evening.
Okay. I hope that gave you a really good insight. It certainly did for me to hear what a student experience is. Thank you so much, and I guess that does conclude our report. I would like to say we did, within the written materials, we did also write about and describe our immersion program, some of the students with that, and I know, talking to Dr. Hendrickson, we talked about at a future meeting, being able to go into more detail with that. So we just, you know, we decided not to focus on that with our oral presentation tonight.
Joey, one question. The Latin jump is really remarkable. Do we have any idea why that is?
You know, I don't have a really great sense. I think, you know, it appeared to come mostly from one school, shared in school. I, you know, I think sometimes it's sort of a, I guess I don't have a great, great answer, but sometimes, you know, students just get really excited for a certain, you know, a number of students get excited, and that sort of creates a, you know, an environment where people are choosing, choosing a certain language. Not a good answer, probably, but yeah, that's the best thing that I could.
Well, it's not dead yet, I guess.
Thank you very much. Very informative report, and thank you so much. You really enhanced our knowledge.
Thank you.
Yeah, Stephanie, I'm constantly astonished at how articulate our kids are, and as you were reading that, the thing I was thinking was, did you write that all yourself and edit that all yourself?
Yes, I did write it myself, and I did have a little editing, so yes, I wrote it myself.
Very well done.
Very, very well done. And Mrs. Swisher is, I'm assuming that Stephanie does as well in Spanish as she does in English. I can believe that you're going to be running the world someday. You can see that. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. That was a very informative report. This brings us to our, and we will not be offended if you need to leave and head to your next activity. This brings us to our board committees' report, board committee reports. First, we have the Board of Education Committee, Leslie Fisher, Bill Anderson, and Rick Schuler.
There is no report tonight for the Education Committee. As we have not met, we are set to meet Tuesday, February 19. Look forward to it.
That brings us to the Board Finance and Operations Committee, Lori Rose, John Julian, and Jeff Penderzky.
The committee has not met since our last meeting, and there is not a report tonight. A meeting will be scheduled in late January or early February.
Thank you. We now move on to our liaison reports. The North Suburban Special Education District, and Lori Rose does have a report for that. She will present that at our next board meeting in February. Likewise, the Illinois Association of School Boards and EdRed, Bill Anderson will report on that at our next meeting, and the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, oh, has a meeting on Thursday, February 7, and Lori Rose will report on that at our next board meeting. The Spirit of 67 Foundation did meet on Tuesday, January 8, 2013. The Spirit received $12,438 in contributions for the month of December. One very exciting aspect of the Spirit is that the Grant Committee will begin meeting on January 31 to go over all of the grants that have been received. Judy Epke, who is the Director of Instructional Technology, will attend that meeting to give the Grant Committee an update on where the district is with their technology planning. And also, this year, as there is always a board member that serves on the Grant Committee, which currently is myself, Leslie Fisher is going to help out on the Grants Committee this year, in kind of a transition year. So we're really at one of the very exciting parts of the Spirit timeframe. So that concludes the Spirit of 67 report. Are there any other committee reports that a board member would like to report? Seeing none, we come to our action items. The first action item is the approval of change order parameters. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mrs. Wald, and Mr. Alvis is going to address one of the things that we've been working on as a practical matter. We've got a pretty significant project going on right now over at Deer Path, and changes come up, things, we encounter things, and we just encountered one just the other day, and Mr. Alvis is going to present a recommendation and rationale for approving our change order parameters.
We're requesting your approval of delegated levels of authority regarding cube construction change orders, and for those who are not familiar with the cube construction, it is at the far east end of the Deer Path campus. It's the old administrative offices, and I thought I'd take this opportunity to give you a quick update as to what the project looks like. So, and I believe the board has seen some of these pictures, but not all of them, but we sent these out a few days ago, showing we're complete with demolition now, and this shows various aspects of it. It's actually hard, when I look at some of these, to remember where I was standing, you know, in relation to the old office, but I think this was back near the old superintendent's office, looking to the northwest. Another view, again, that was with demolition. What you start to see in some of these is, if you think of that old space, when you take that hallway out and some of those walls out, it's a large space, and some of that will be open from one end to the other. And then you'll see some configurations as well. And then you'll see some configurations as we go further, where they start to frame some of the space back in. But again, it's going to remain open. Now, these pictures were taken today. They started on Friday and yesterday with the drywalling. This would be if you came in from that exterior door and you were looking towards Deer Path School, that hallway, where the gentleman's on the scaffold to the right was the Beecher and Baggett Rooms. You can see that's been opened up. To the left, the restrooms that were there are still there. Some of the tiered seating is being framed out and going in. To give you a better perspective of where that is, there's the exterior door leading to the parking lot. So when you come in, that's there, and then that whole expanse is open. And then this picture, I believe, shows, and this may have changed at the end, at one time, this was the green screen. Okay. So there'll be a green screen in there for video production that the kids will use. And then will that be an open area, or is that a glass wall?
Glass, if you're looking through. And then the walls will be re-curved, the corners, and the curved floor to ceiling will be re-covered on the floor, so whatever background they want will be. It's a very long, pretty shed, not shed, a green.
So as you can see, the work on the cube is proceeding. And while it's a relatively small project, changes to the scope of work do occur. Some of the changes are nondiscretionary, and they may include such things as clarifications from a permitting agency or unforeseen conditions that were not known prior to the work being awarded. And I will touch on that in a moment. Other times, though, a change in work may not be required but desired by the owner after reviewing particular circumstances. In either case, the potential to disrupt the work schedule is very high if a decision on the potential change is not processed in a timely manner. There is a protocol for processing and evaluating change orders. Typically, when a change in work scope is to be considered, the architect will issue a proposal request to the contractor. After pricing the proposed change, the contractor issues a change order back to the architect. The architect then reviews that to look at the cost being charged and see if they are reasonable. If, in the architect's opinion, they are, they then pass that on to us as owners, and then it's up to us if we're okay with the price to sign off on it. Now, the parameters that I've drafted here for your consideration tonight, we actually borrowed from when we did the high school renovation in 2006. Because of the scope, and again, the tight timeline, we established parameters but with much higher thresholds. But what we've got in front of you tonight would be that change orders up to $10,000 could be approved by myself or by Carol White, just by our own discretion in reviewing it. And most of these tend to be nondiscretionary, so there's not a lot of subjective evaluation that goes into that. Change orders between $10,000 but less than 25 would be approved after informing Superintendent Simic and talking through, and that's really to check, kind of a check and balance. Have we looked at all the options? Are there any other alternatives? And just talking through the process utilized. Change orders greater than $25,000 that are time-sensitive would require an emergency meeting of the Board of Education. And change orders that are greater than $25,000 but that are not time-sensitive would be submitted to the board at their next regularly scheduled meeting. Now, I'll give a real-life example. This electrical or data feed is present, and it's coming up in the slab in the space. But it wasn't known because it was buried inside of a wall. But in tracing it out, it's, whatever the feed was, we had three of them, and you have the paperwork at your places tonight, they were three feeds that couldn't be cut off. So a change order came in to, yesterday on the holiday, actually saw cut some of this And you can see where they dug the trench and then re-fed the power over to a column, and then continued the feed up through the column. So we had three situations where that occurred. It wasn't known in the blueprints because it was assumed that the feeds came in through the wall from the top. But when they went through demolition and saw that it was in the slab, which is much more unusual, and then determined that it was a feed that could not be terminated and necessitated the change order. Last week, and I included that in an update, I approved that because of the saw cutting involved. It was $11,000 total. It had been reviewed by the architect. They felt that was a fair price. And because the saw cutting involves a lot of noise, we wanted to do that when kids weren't in school, and the holiday provided that opportunity. But I would have felt more comfortable doing it with parameters like we have before you tonight in place. Any questions on the proposed parameters or the change order process?
Alan, these parameters are just for the cube project?
Yes.
Any other questions, board members?
I actually thought these parameters were more global. Is there consideration to have this applicable to any project?
I'm trying to think what might be coming up where we might apply it, but I'm sure if we have.
They're pretty reasonable levels, so I'd be open to it. We could talk about it later.
Okay.
What do these replace?
Nothing really. It just gives us the ability to keep the project moving on schedule without delay. And actually, I think, hopefully, when we went into this, because we weren't opening the space up to the environment, we weren't doing a lot of digging or any digging, really, we were hoping to minimize the number of change orders. And, you know, we're through the demolition phase, and we might have one or two more that pop up, but hopefully, that'll be the end of them.
I think the levels are reasonable. I have no problem with it.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the change order parameters? So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. This brings us to the approval of cube furniture purchase. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And last week and the week before, I would come down to Mr. Alvis's office on a regular basis, and I would look at him, and he would say, boy, this furniture is really frustrating. And then this week, I was relieved to see that he came in and said, how are you doing? He said, I'm doing really well. I saw this on the agenda, and apparently, it finally came together.
It all worked out, yes. Part of the conceptual development of the cube included the identification of furnishings to complete the space. The initial list was developed by Perkins and Will, our architect, after consulting with a staff committee that also included students. Staff members who participated in the review selection process included Dr. Hendrickson, Amy Lamberty, Laura Washington, Leanna Fifehouse, Sabia Raman, did I pronounce that correctly? Thank you. And Judy Epke and Emily Stefan. The furnishings list was then provided to three vendors, who were invited in to make presentations to the committee. The vendors were brought in for their expertise and asked to provide alternate selections where they felt it was deemed appropriate. In other words, where we weren't going to compromise the functionality of the piece or the aesthetic look of the piece, but maybe a different brand or a different model could provide some cost savings. So all three vendors came in and made presentations. After the vendor presentations, a district parent, who is a designer by trade, was engaged to help kind of bring that to closure. And I'm glad we did. The expertise that she brought to the process, we found to be very, very helpful. From the meetings I attended, I thought the group did a great job because they really took their tasks seriously. They talked through each space, the components of the spaces, how they'd be used, how the furniture would help enhance or inhibit that. And really, they ended up pairing back the initial list that was provided from the architect. Before you tonight is a recommendation to acquire the cube furnishings from three vendors per the amounts listed below. The first vendor would be the Lowery McDonald Company in the amount of $39,907.74. The second company would be Interior Investments out of Lincolnshire in the amount of $16,173.28. And the third company is OEC out of Chicago in the amount of $33,346.76. Also at your place tonight are detailed orders sheets showing exactly the model numbers and the fabric selections for each piece from each vendor. All of the brands being acquired participate in purchasing cooperatives, and the purchase prices reflect the discounts available through those cooperatives. Utilizing a cooperative gives us a little bit more flexibility in selecting the brand that we want and coordinating the brands across the space. So we'd recommend your consideration and approval.
Any questions, board members? Alan, I, oh, sorry, Leslie, go ahead.
Just as far as recognizing that the use of this furniture will be quite different than if it was in one of our homes, are warranties different from company to company?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, most of the fabrics are commercial-grade fabrics, but some of this, there'll be some custom fabrics on them as well. But that was all taken into account, that this would be a middle school and how the space would be used.
And Alan, we were, I think the original budget you were suggesting to us was $100,000, and so this fits well under the $100,000, and?
This, I don't have it added up on this sheet, but I think it's around $89,000.
All right.
Also along that line, we had, will this fully furnish the cube, or do you anticipate that in a year or two, this is it, that we're thinking, boom, we don't need any other furniture for the cube?
Well, once we do, we're not omitting any sections on this. We did pair back because as we talked through what the spaces were. But then it becomes like any other space in the building. Things evolve and change over time. And so then we would just address those through a normal budgetary process. But we don't anticipate coming back to you with another purchase request for a large amount of furniture.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the cube furniture purchase as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of human resources items, including hiring, resignations, terminations, medical and family leave, absences, and change in status. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for November and December of 2012, the minutes of an executive session and a regular meeting on November 27th, 2012, the minutes of an executive session and a regular meeting on December 11th of 2012, the minutes of a special meeting, and a joint board workshop on December 12th, 2012, as well as the minutes of the tax levy hearing on December 11th, 2012. Disposals of audio recordings, there are none. Is there any item that a board member would like removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. For your requests, we had three. One from William Holst of Libertyville, Illinois, one from Catherine Smizer of NBC Universal, and one from Dale T. Miller. Announcements, Friday, February 15th, 2013, is Tri-District Institute Day. There will be no school that day for our students. Monday, February 18th, 2013, is President's Day. No school. Tuesday, February 23rd, 2013, will be our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM at Lake Forest High School West Campus Boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I think that date is incorrect. February 23rd is a Saturday.
Twenty-sixth. Is that the fourth?
Yeah, the 26th. It is the 26th.
Is that the fourth?
Right?
Yep.
Yes, correction. Thank you, Leslie. The next board meeting is Tuesday, February 26th, 2013, at, but at the correct place, at the Lake Forest High School West Campus Boardroom. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.